You are recording.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. Commissioner Reed is not going to be able to join us today. So this is Vice Chair Kelly. And we're going to start with a work session. And today, our work session is an update from the Heritage Conservation Council. Just a reminder for anyone listening online or here in the courthouse, our work sessions are for information only. We don't take any action during our work sessions. That doesn't mean they're not about action. They're about a lot of great things, but we don't take any action at them. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah to introduce our guests and kick us off.
Well, I, it's my pleasure to introduce Caitlin Stanley, who is our new Heritage Conservation Council Coordinator. It's a lot of Cs. And welcome her to this role. And we're really looking forward to this update. So I'll let you introduce the rest of your team.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to meet with us this afternoon. This is Amy Vanderre, Chair of the Council, and Jenny Trukana-Muller, Vice Chair of the Council. Get our PowerPoint up. Thank you.
Yeah.
See. Maybe I have to stand up there. Okay. No worries.
Yeah, that's a good sign.
Okay. My apologies for that. Okay, so today we'll provide a brief background on the origins of the HCC and the council structure. And we'll follow that with an overview of the ways that we do the work to preserve the heritage of Douglas County through the Natural Cultural Grant Program, surveys and inventories of county heritage, and by connecting the public to resources and educational opportunities. In 2010, the commissioners authorized the creation of the Natural and Cultural Heritage Task Force. This group was tasked to make recommendations to conserve heritage for future generations and enhance the economic development benefits of the conservation-based efforts. In 2011, Douglas County Resolution 1119 established the Heritage Conservation Council. Under this, the council and the coordinator work to ensure that the conservation of natural and cultural resources in Douglas County by administering the Heritage Conservation Council Natural and Cultural Grant Program, monitor the inventory of natural and cultural heritage through surveys and inventories, and providing educational opportunities and heritage preservation-related resources and support. In 2014, Douglas County became a certified local government, and the HCC works to uphold this status. Benefits of being a CLG include partnerships with National Preservation Alliances, Historical Societies, and the National Park Service. These partners offer preservation-related resources and trainings for CLG members. Because CLGs are required to participate in ongoing trainings, and members are expected to have certain areas of expertise, this status provides increased access to federal funding, and Douglas County has applied for and been awarded these funds every year since becoming a CLG.
Sorry. So I'm Amy Vanderre, and I'm the current chair. And so this is sort of like a little introduction about the members of our council right now. And there's two sides of it, so you'll be able to see all the members. Within our council, we have experts in law, architecture, archaeology, botany, planning, nature, and biology. The interdisciplinary knowledge of the council members allows us to engage in meaningful contributions and discussions about a broad range of cultural and heritage issues. Council members may serve up to two, three-year terms, and we've retained council members for multiple terms.
In.
Do you want me to go? Go to the next one. Oh, no, you go ahead.
In November, we got together as a full council for the first time in person in quite a while, and actually, for the first time in person with some of our new members, since we had been virtual for much of the last two years. And we talked about what we wanted to do for the coming year, and with the transition from Jan to Caitlin, we decided we wanted to just stay the course for the year, make sure that everything was transitioned smoothly. All of our programs, events, grants were administered in a smooth way. But we're excited, looking forward to see where there might be opportunities to engage more with the citizens of the county or with work that's going on in terms of conservation and preservation around the county. We've talked a little bit about what some of the benefits of expanding the council might be. One is, as Caitlin mentioned, under CLG guidelines, with the limited number of spots we have on the council, we are, we're mostly just filling them with the required expertise. And that limits our ability to really represent the diverse demographics of the county. So if we were able to have a bit larger council, at some point, we could better represent the lived experiences of people in the county, and we could divvy up the work a little bit. We'll talk in a minute about all of the grants we got, but all of our programs basically are expanding, and it's, we're all doing a lot of work, putting in a lot of hours on each of the programs. And I think we're kind of at the ceiling of what we might be able to do with the current size of the council. When we talk about conserving heritage at the county, we're referring to the tangible, such as buildings, intangible, such as knowledge and natural, such as geology, aspects of heritage. So sometimes heritage can appear to be neatly parsed out in these three areas. But often heritage contains combinations of these categories, where the natural may be inseparable from the intangible. And a current example of this that I'm sure we're all aware of is the Inju-Jewahobe Rock in Robinson Park. The HCC coordinator and the HCC are continually challenging ourselves to learn more and better understand what heritage means to the county. We are continually participating in preservation, heritage, equity, and leadership trainings. We're working right now in the planning stages of coordinating a county-city employee racial history and civil rights pilot program. That's not the final name, in partnership with the Watkins Museum of History. We aim to launch this sometime in the summer, and each session will connect heritage sites in the county to historic and contemporary civil rights issues. One of the main things that we do as the HCC is manage the natural and cultural grant program.
So I'm going to speak first to one of our successful projects, which was an architectural-type project, which is St. Luke Amy Church. St. Luke Amy Church is located in Lawrence. It's a true grassroots effort, which is inspirational to the stewardship of our community infrastructure. The church was designated to the National Register of Historic Places in 2001. St. Luke Amy was built in 1910 and has been in continuous use by a predominantly African-American congregation since. It is significant both culturally and its ties to the African-American community and documented correlation with the writer Langston Hughes. But it's also architecturally significant for its fine construction and stained glass windows. The church was in desperate need of stained glass window preservation as well as other work by 2020. The church made tremendous efforts to fundraise, beginning with a $10,000 challenge grant by Jeff and Mary Weinberg, then earned a $90,000 historic trust fund grant. The HCC major grant that they are awarded soon after helped tie into the funds they needed for the HTF grant, as well as help complete the stained glass window work. This was a catalyst for multiple other community groups, especially the LPA, to fundraise and eventually provided $43,000 in membership dues, a $25,000 no-interest loan, and another $15,000 donation from the Weinbergs and the Shelley Miller Trust. So in total, HCC actually only funded about $87,750 of the project. But the project itself was just, we happened to be a timely effort that we got to contribute to something along with the whole community, which helped build not only trust in the community that this was a worthwhile project to contribute to, but also the idea that we do want to preserve this building and engage with the history of the church.
I'll talk a little bit about a friend of the COA project that we funded on the Udora Boat Ramp. They restored part of the riverbank and planted native plants along the boat ramp. The immediate impacts are that the native plants help keep the soil in place and prevent erosion. But the longer-term impacts are that they engaged a whole variety of partners, got school kids out there, got lots of different groups to learn about native plants, and the benefits of local ecology and what a healthy ecology looks like. And the even longer-term impacts are is that as climate change increases in this area and the rivers flood more, those plants will hold the soil in place better and be more resilient to fluctuations in temperature and should keep the riverbanks healthier in the long term. And they're also just prettier. That's a nice benefit. And I'll speak to another project that we funded twice. This is the La Yarda Project. In 2015, the HCC funded the traveling exhibit, which can be seen at the St. John's Fiesta every year. And then in 2020, the HCC funded the rescue of a set of oral histories that was on cassettes and videotapes and was about to deteriorate and be lost. So they were professionally digitized and transcribed. And then they were given to the Lawrence Public Library for access on their portal, and then all of the transcription information is at the Watkins Museum of History. So these two projects for the La Yarda have resulted in increased community conversations and awareness of La Yarda, a documentary made by the community, and collaborative efforts to just give greater recognition to this heritage. 2022 Grant Program, we received 25 applications, which is a huge jump up from the past year, which I think was 14 or 15 grant applications. And about a dozen in years before that, people requested about three-quarters of a million dollars. We have $200,000 to award. We've got a monumental task in front of us. There are some really great projects in the list. Some of the projects are similar to what we've seen in the past, restoration of historic structures. There's a project to restore the prairie at Prairie Park. But then there are some really innovative projects. We got an application from a group called SOMOS to use funds to create two community celebrations for traditional festivities around Day of the Dead and Day of Spring to kind of bring heritage into the future and into the present in a way that maybe we haven't, we haven't been thinking of heritage in that term, in those terms before. I think we've been looking mostly at past heritage. We also got a really interesting application from a group called Ascending Stars. They came upon a collection of letters between Haskell children and their families. When students were forced to live at Haskell, their project would be to digitize that collection, make it public, share those stories with the public. There's just some really compelling projects in there. There's one from Saltwell Farms to restore a barn where they have a restaurant and do education on things like local foraging. So we have, we have a big task in front of us choosing how to award that money. Yeah, and one thing that we get repeated annually are organizations that come to us for basic operating costs. They use these grants in that way. And that's something we're aware of, and we're really trying to deter that because it's not a sustainable source of funding for basic operating costs. So one thing that we're working on as a council and the coordinator is to collaborate with community partners to build a training program or workshops for these organizations on how to have better fundraising strategies so that this can really be used to benefit the wider community. And we can more easily fund the new applicants that we're getting every year.
So you can probably tell we're pretty busy. And Caitlin is a wonderful coordinator for our group. But our council members, we are volunteer, and we volunteer a lot of time to this cause. And so aside from doing our monthly meetings every Thursday, every month, we often meet to work on smaller-scale items in between with our committees. Council members volunteer their time to plan for special projects, such as the upcoming Natural Landmark Tour of Douglas County and the Douglas County Preservation Conference, which will be our second year doing that. Council members will review all the grant applications for the grants, then we attend the presentations and the evaluations, and then go through the award process. We are invested in this cause because we understand the importance of natural, cultural, and heritage preservation. And we, we like being a part of this process, and we actually, I think that the dedication comes from us seeing that we do get response and results from our program. So we've been really excited to share those.
Yeah, I'll just second that the work that they put in is considerable. I think in the last couple of weeks alone, over 500 pages of applications each member has gone through, and then hours of deliberation.
So our surveys, I'll start with the historic structure surveys. And this has been really exciting for me as a preservation architect, because I've actually never seen this level of dedication to rural surveys ever done. And I can't, honestly, sometimes I almost like can't believe it when this, when this survey, I get to talk about it, it makes my heart beat faster because I'm so happy for it. The level, like this, this is really what makes it worthwhile for me is to see that we're able to have this type of impact in Douglas County. So part of the resolution with the, for the HCC that we had, Resolution 11-19, and establishing the HCC, one of the important was, one thing of importance was to conduct an ongoing inventory of natural and cultural heritage resources, including but not limited historically and architecturally significant properties and land structures, and areas that exemplify the culture, social, economic, political, agricultural, environmental, or architectural history of the nation, region, state, or county. So that's the purpose. That's why we started doing the surveys. And this last year has literally been the last portion. The surveys were broken up because of cost, like cost and ability. We had to break them up. So it took nearly 11 years to do all the surveys, and we completed them this last year. They were systematically done, broken apart, and then funded with the Historic Preservation Fund, HPF, grant 6040 with us through the Kansas State Historic Preservation Office, the SHPO office. As the consultants were working on this, they went through and created reports, which we also then communicated with the community members, which was great, and we had great outcomes. Before COVID, we were seeing like roomfuls of people in the community coming out to hear about it. And then during COVID, we moved to an online Zoom type of format for the sharing, but it was still, it was still widely visited. But of course, the, the energy of having everyone in a room together, we did miss that. The consultants were also encouraged to be aware of natural resources, as well as their influence on cultural development. Natural areas such as high-quality prairies, we understand are being lost. And so that was something that they would include in their report as well. After we completed the entire survey, the idea was then to move into a rural preservation plan for Douglas County. So we submitted for an HPF grant for funding for the Rural Preservation Plan last year, and we're awarded. And so that has gone out, and we have an architect right now working on that, and that will come back soon and hopefully help us give some direction to our rural preservation for Douglas County.
We've also provided some funding to the Kansas Biological Survey at the University of Kansas to survey natural resources around the county. They have created a really lovely brochure and map of the native prairies, the old growth forests, places like that. They have applied this year for a grant to inventory hay meadows, which can pretty closely mimic native grassland. And similar to what Amy said, these inventories, I think, just kind of lay the foundation for us to understand where in the county things are that we may want to protect, especially as the county grows. And then our next survey efforts will be the archaeological survey, and we'll aim to do that in 2023. The last archaeological survey for Douglas County was done in 1996, so it's time for us to do this. We're hoping to develop this plan for an archaeological survey with substantial input from communities that are impacted by archaeological work so that the preservation and protection of culturally sensitive spaces and items occurs in a culturally relative, relevant, and sensitive manner. So we're actively learning how to do this. We have an archaeologist on the council, and my background is in archaeology and indigenous studies. And then I think all of this lays the groundwork for the Open Space Plan. As the county expands, we hope that the Heritage Conservation Council can provide information on where there are resources that are important to different communities, plant communities, human communities, where there are archaeological resources, and then areas that might not have those, that might be good opportunities for the county to grow. So we hope that we can work together with the Open Space Team on sharing information back and forth about how the county might grow in a way that's smart and works for many different communities.
So one of our new programs we implemented, we're in, we're starting our junior year of it, our third year, is going to be the Barn Assessment Program. The Barn Assessment Program was created when the HCC partnered with the Kansas Barn Alliance, KBA, and they provided a portion of the required matching funds, about $1,500, for the $9,000 Kansas Historic Preservation Fund, HPF, grant. So we basically then selected six historic barns across Douglas County, and they applied for, they sent an application to be a part of this. We didn't just randomly select them. And a lot of them had already heard about us because we'd been doing surveys of their barns and areas. So for them, it wasn't completely unknown who we were, which is great for us. And then they basically received a structural assessment, a scope of work documents, and price estimates for barn repairs. Of the six barns selected for the 2020 Barn Program, three became listed on the National Register. Two received Kansas Agricultural Resource Grants for $79,000 in total for rehabilitation work, and that was in 2021. And the group of the property owners, we kind of started to, this again was a little rough during COVID, but we started to form like informal barn preservation support group, which we use to kind of support and, and inspire other barn owners to participate in the program. So we, our investment from our budget was just $2,000 for this program at that point, and you can see how much we've gotten out of it. I mean, property owners, aside, tax credits aside, had earned almost $80,000 plus getting the assessments done for their barns. So a huge return on this one. We also are working through to create like a barn preservation kit to come up with some ideas to keep promoting it and keeping our collaboration with the Kansas Barn Alliance to promote the ongoing need for rural property owners across Kansas. The second year in 2021, we actually had 12 applicants, so we doubled, and we picked 11, which we're going to have to, based off of the abilities of us and the assessor, we have to actually scale back this next year because 11 was too many. But that's okay. We, we made it through. So 11 received the grants, and the barns in the second year have all been assessed, and barn owners are starting to make plans for future repairs. And we're here to start helping them when we start seeing grant funds and tax credits become available. In efforts to further promote our rural, natural, and historical resources, HCC worked in cooperation with COA Valley Farm Tours this last year to include heritage sites. So sites were in Vinland, Wells Overlook, Baldwin area, Udora area. All the sites were free to visit, and volunteers from the different organization helped with the planning and the staffing of the different sites. And we had like a little map that you could use to get around it. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm also up here. I talk a lot this slide. The National Register nominations, the Rural Historic Structures Survey of Douglas County and interest in the Barn Assessment Program has yielded renewed interest in listing properties on the National Register of Historic Places. In 2021, Douglas County was awarded an HPF Historic Preservation Fund grant to coordinate the nomination of 10 buildings in Douglas County, 10 structures, summer barns, that are eligible to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. This is going to be a tremendous boost to the diversity of listings from Douglas County on the National Register, as there are many rural properties included in this project. Listing on the state or national register of historic places is crucial for property owners if they wish to take advantage of historic tax credits, which are actually in the works to, for rural property owners to be expanded. So they're going to even benefit more than they do right now, hopefully.
And then we're going to have our second annual Douglas County Preservation Conference this year in Baldwin City on June 24th and 25th. This is in partnership with heritage organizations throughout the county. And day one will include site tours to nearby heritage areas, including several grants that we funded. And then day two will have a combination of hands-on workshops, oral history recording sessions, and panel sessions that speak to timely preservation topics. The conference will also provide a space for conversations about land and heritage and serve as a space for community input on open spaces.
So we started some collaborative projects in partnership with Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area. And this one actually sort of emerged out of the pandemic because we, we're basically, like, how do you, how do you start to kind of get people out there and doing things? And they have Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area has an app that they created in which you can do tours, like, by yourself with. And the app is supposed to promote tourism of sites within their region that they cover. So we launched the Santa Fe Trail Landmark Tour of Douglas County, and that was in early 2021. And using the app, there was 13 stops along the trail, all in Douglas County. They, each one has an audio description, which was also organized by the HCC council members. So when you get to the stop on the app, you can listen to an audio description of it, which was really interesting. And one of our council members, Nick, had his students at Baker University record them. So we had Baker being involved with that. Images were also included to bring the history of the stop to life, and then registered users could collect stamps from each. Oh, we're good. Okay, sorry. I was like, send them out. Registered users could collect stamps. So on the app, you would get a stamp when you got a site on the tour, and it could recognize that you were there. So this was a really fun activity. Actually, did this, both this one and the Douglas County one that they did previously with my son, and we had a great time during a time when we were in lockdown. We could drive to these remote sites and get out and walk around and see stuff.
We're working on a tour of the natural landmarks of Douglas County next. We're aiming to represent the variety of different ecosystems in the county, prairie, wetlands, forests, but also make it accessible to a variety of people. The Waukerusa, the Udora Boat Ramp project on the Waukerusa will be accessible to people in Udora. We'll have the Baker Wetlands for people in Lawrence, Prairie Acre for people who only get around by bus or public transportation, Pioneer, the prairie next to Pioneer Cemetery in Baldwin, Wells Overlook for somebody who just wants to drive up to a site and isn't able to hike. And we hope, like Amy said, it'll be a fun opportunity for people to get out and see some of the gems that we have in the county and the diversity of different natural offerings.
Great. So this is, this is towards the end, I promise. In the past few years, we have, as a humanity, had to manage tremendous changes, sadness, and unimaginable obstacles. Even with these impediments, the HCC has continued to rise up and adapt new efforts of leadership and guidance in protecting natural and cultural heritage. Place is important, and Douglas County is a place inclusive of many wonderful resources and people. Projects supported by the HCC programs and grant benefit all of Douglas County, whether giving us a restored prairie to walk through, a new cultural experience, a historic building to be inspired by, or the wonders of rural farmsteads that provide sustenance to so many. Mental health is strengthened and restored with a connection to, with a connection, sorry, with a connection to community, nature, heritage, and a reflection of belonging to a place. We have won awards because of these efforts, but the true reward is the continuity of this program and giving a narrative to those who have not been recognized or overlooked in history.
That sums everything up for us today for our presentation. Should I stop? Share?
So thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Don't apologize for being long at all. It was really informative. Yeah, it was really great. These are pretty much just discussions, so for short portio, I don't know if you have any questions or thoughts.
I did just have a few questions and a couple of thoughts. I really appreciated the inclusiveness that you're talking through on some of the tours and thinking about public transportation and access. So that sounds great. These do sound like really cool tours, so glad to hear that you and your son had a good time going out to them during the pandemic.
We did.
I did hear a bit about kind of service learning with some Baker University students doing some things, and I saw that you're teaching in the architecture program. We had a great kind of service learning opportunity for folks in architecture with Wells Overlook. So I was wondering, how intentional are you when it comes to kind of engaging with different universities around the county, Baker, KU, and Haskell in some of this work?
So with the conference itself was held at Baker University last year and this coming year. So there's definitely opportunity, and we talked about having opportunities for students to present posters or to have a chance to also be a part of it. The Wells Overlook was a design-build project, which we had nothing to do with, but that's through the 509 Dirtwork Studio. But obviously, it was super great for me to have students be reactive to a site that I consider part of, like, the other side of my life, I guess. Whether or not they saw it that way is another question. But, but I think for me personally, I would actually like to have more student involvement with, with our group. But, but I think for me personally, I would actually like to have more student involvement with, with our group, but something that's a little bit more formalized, that we can say that, you know, and encourage all the universities to be a part of it. Haskell, Baker, KU, and then if we would like to include maybe like Peaslee or even like some types of, other types of schools would be acceptable. But I think that that would be something that I would like to see in the future as part of our program. That's something as a council will have to continue to discuss though.
Well, and I did hear quite a bit that this is a lot of work, particularly, I mean, you all are volunteering a ton of time and deeply appreciative of that. One thing that I did hear kind of the start of the presentation was just the size of the council. So is that size? Is that set by us? Is that set by you? Is there kind of conversation about maybe expanding the council and spreading out the work a bit more?
I believe the size was set when the council was created. Is it seven people? Seven? Yeah.
Yeah, it was created by the board. So, you know, I do think that is something the commission could consider. I do, one of the things that, you know, and I think that I mentioned to Caitlin in some of the initial conversations on this, the capacity of this team to do really tremendous work is phenomenal. I, I don't want to overstretch it. And so I do think if we bring other folks on board, making sure they understand that, you know, the level of sort of engagement that this group has a strong history of is important. And then finding the right people to fill them. You know, I, this, this is a council that has really targeted areas that it's trying to get. And as commissioners know, sometimes it's a real struggle for us to fill. So I think we could engage in that and process really intentionally, like how to, where do you need them? But knowing that sometimes it's just a capacity issue of how do we find the right people and then a capacity on your end to, to have people do the work.
I'm on the Communications Committee for the council. And we had talked about whether we might want to do education for elementary students or materials for high school students or programs like that. But we just decided as a committee of two or three people that we needed to focus on promoting our existing programs. We'd also like to have stronger ties with, as Amy mentioned, Peaslee, Haskell. Some of our council members work at KU and have worked at Baker or currently work at Baker, but we don't have as deep of relationships with some of the other schools as we'd like.
Yeah, and that, that leads me into my question I had about that expansion. Have you put any thought to, you know, I'm sure when the county, the former county commission decided on seven members, they did that with some thought.
I think a lot of that was guided by that CLG status. So what's required of the CLG membership?
And so have you put any thought into like, what would be the downside of expanding to more? I mean, it's easy to see like we'd have more people. That could be good. But have you put any thought to what, what might be a negative of expanding?
Yeah. I mean, I think what Sarah was getting at with the capacity to help get people on board, I, I need some time to get on board before I can help other people get on board. So I think there's that aspect. But I think that we've considered that expanding the council size can look a couple of different ways and that it doesn't necessarily need to be this traditional role that we have for the other seven council members. Perhaps it's something a little bit more like an advisory council or, you know, these student seats that we've talked about to engage younger audiences. But I think it would be probably different than, or at least we would like to try something a little bit different, I think. Does that sound right to you, Will?
It does. And I think one of the downsides would be that our discussions are pretty free flowing and easy right now with seven people. It's easy to have everybody's voice be heard and that would be more of a challenge with more people. But if we were intentional about the roles and say, expanded the people who help us review grants or expanded the people who help us with events, that could be a way to increase our bandwidth without limiting how effective we are.
And another important thing would be to avoid redundancy of the type of people who are on the council. So we don't really want, we want to expand it, but we wouldn't want to have like another lawyer and another architect, because then we just basically are redundancy. So the idea is to really find maybe a different way to kind of, to think about how to do the expansion.
I think it's interesting that you mentioned, talk about like, how do we engage people without necessarily making them sign on the dotted line to commit to four years of dedicated service in, in this work. And that's actually something that we talk about a lot here at the county. And I, I think it's great to have Caitlin engaged in this process of like, I, I want to do that countywide. You know, we've talked about that with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and Behavioral Health Leadership Council. So your struggle there is shared in terms of like, how do we engage that? And I've talked about it with our communications folks and it honestly, I think it's a struggle just as nationwide. Folks want to be engaged, but they don't want to be engaged in a traditional, come on a Thursday night and dedicate three hours of your life to sit in a room every month for four years. So it, it's great to have another partner in that place and to that work. And, and maybe we can find some innovative, creative ways to sort of engage people or, you know, as an advisory or feedback loop, like we'll only call you if we need you on certain things or, you know, maybe there's some ways to do that. And I've tried to ask our team to try to be creative and looking at those models. And I'm not finding them right now, really where I'd like them to be. But I think it's definitely something that as an organization is, is shared and you know, maybe we can come up with a collective solution. I don't think that replaces the need to maybe expand the council, but you're never, we're never going to fully represent everyone, you know, or every community on those groups. So maybe there's some other ways that we can be mutually beneficial.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I also agree that like, we do need better representation of community on our council. So we do need to do something to change that.
But yeah, I think reducing the commitment would help us be more accessible. Also, we heard last year from somebody who was applying for a grant. I think he sits on the food policy, food and policy. Yeah. And he was just saying, it's such a time commitment and it wasn't really something he could pull off economically in an easy way. And so asking somebody to commit, like you said, for four years for all of these hours, if they've got other obligations or two jobs or something like that, it would really be a struggle.
The one thing about the council that I think is to our benefit in order, in, in terms of hopefully having people being interested in joining and these newer roles that we do create is that we do have a lot of the work we do, I feel like has a, has a visual response. Like you can go and see what happens and it's, we have a very much, the, the impact is, is very prominent to me, which I think is helpful. And that's where this council for me is different than others that I've worked on where it sort of feels like, like you point out, like you're meeting every month, but like nothing's happening and that's really painful. And then there's always something blocking you and you're just like, well, maybe we should give up. So the one thing I really like about working with the, the HCC is that it's, it's, it feels to me as though we can come up with plans and they can be implemented. And I feel like that, that, having that freedom to like, be able to, you know, be like, okay, we're going to apply for a grant for this, we're going to do this and make it work. Then that's actually beneficial for us to have, to have that flexibility to kind of plan our, our, our course.
And I have just one other question. You talked about the rural preservation plan. I was glad you got to sort of, once we complete the survey, what's next?
Yep.
And do you think that will inform? So you talked about how the number of grants that we're getting way outseeds the number of dollars that we, we put to it. Do you think the plan will help inform applicants? Or is that too narrow of a focus?
I think the rural preservation plan, I, the, the intention of it and the hope for it is that it's a starting out point for hopefully greater ripples of people becoming interested in preservation in areas that have typically just been overlooked or have been given, not been told that their, their property has importance or has significance, or maybe they've been told it doesn't even like, you have an old barn, it's not worth anything. And we're coming around and saying, no, this is heritage that has value and there's, there's a, there's a point to it. And we, we think it has so much value that we want to put it on the national register and they're sometimes almost surprised by it. And I think that that's something that the rural preservation plan is really going to start creating that type of conversation. The goal mainly with that is a lot of national register, like understanding what's, what's going to be really a true district, what's an area that we should focus on for national register and things like that. Hopefully it will kind of be evolving to and continue to feed into other things that people are, that we talked about like open space or things that all of a sudden need a resource to look to. It should hopefully tie in with that as well. That document won't be done until, for at least six more months. So we, we won't even be public for after a while after that. So hopefully we don't have it yet. So hopefully when we get it, we can kind of parse through it and see where it leads us.
But the consultants that are working on that today did meet with the Open Space Planning Committee to just talk about what they're doing and just see if there's something that they can do to make sure efforts aren't redundant and work together on that. So they, they shared a little bit about what they're doing. They're just starting. So.
So it actually sounds like the opposite might happen. You might have more grant requests based on the rural reservation.
I'm not sure that the rural preservation plan will really inform our natural cultural grant program. That, I don't know. It feels like different.
It could though. It could have an impact either way. I don't know. It'd be interesting. I feel as though our, I'm hoping to, I, I feel as though our grant program is, I feel like it's starting to really embrace more of the cultural significance of things, which I think in the past, it's kind of been more of a brick and mortar type of grant program where it was kind of building based from what I gathered. And then, and then it started to evolve into more natural based projects. And now we're seeing, I think, a lot more cultural and heritage projects that I think that have been overlooked, to be honest, or it never felt that maybe they were worthy of funding. Like maybe they truly didn't think that this was a grant pool that they could draw from. But like, every year that you invite or give money to someone who falls slightly outside of like the, the range or the circle that you've funded in the past, it enlightens a little bit more people around it and lets them say, hey, I actually am kind of like that too. And I could be a part of this as well. And it makes them think how they could also be a part of this and that they have value for Douglas County. And I think that that's part of the program is really, it's almost more spawned by word of mouth and by projects being funded than actually us like putting a program out there and having them come to it and then come back to us. It's sort of, I almost feel like it's sparked by the amazing projects that come to us. They go back out and they just shine.
I see us a little bit like extension agents for preservation or conservation. People come to us for information. We can connect them to resources and then they kind of go out there and share, like Amy was saying, with their neighbors, oh, I protected my barn and I got this great tax credit. And they can be ambassadors for some of the programs that we represent. But we, we have some funds, but I think our bigger impact is connecting people with larger pots of money or programs or experts or things like that.
Yeah. And I think in the deliberation, one thing I heard this year is we're getting a lot of these brick and mortar projects. And just wondering if this is the best use of these funds, because there are other funds available for those projects. There are tax credits. And if instead, perhaps in the future, we need to reorient the guidelines that you can apply for this if you're taking advantage of these other funds. But if you're not, then it's not really meant for the brick and mortar in the same way that it is for the cultural and natural, because there aren't other funding opportunities for cultural and natural heritage preservation in the county. We are kind of it. So.
Yeah. And buildings that may be culturally significant are usually, if they don't have integrity, they cannot be on the national register and they cannot be on the state register and they're then ineligible for any tax credit funds. So buildings that are falling into that realm, I also have kind of a special spot for when we do grant reviews, because they basically have no other pot of money they can go for. So I don't want us to change it to only national register nomination. That, that's something I've always really appreciated is if we didn't, because so many grants require that. And it's sort of like, you get left out of so much and you can have a culturally important building or structure, but maybe it's not meeting integrity. And then we can, but we can still fund that. And I think that's where we really have a special, special spot for these projects.
Yeah, we just kind of brainstormed just on the phone the other day that maybe it's a good idea to just talk about, like, if you're not, if you are eligible to be on the register and you're not taking advantage of that, just explain to us why not? Because there are some reasons that people have that are really valid. So just, we might need to expand our application and guidelines to just help us understand this a little bit more. So I think that'll help the deliberation process too, because it's so long. And there isn't room for public input there. So you can't actually ask questions and then there's just assumptions made. So that could help clear things up.
We're seeing similar demand for prairie restoration projects, which are also quite expensive. And we are thinking on ways we might be able to connect people with resources beyond just what the council has access to.
I think that's, while you're thinking there, you know, I think that's one of the areas where I'm a little disappointed. I think one of the things when we created this fund was our hope was this would spawn other funds in other places. And we're seeing applicants from places where I feel like, and, and I mean, University of Kansas is applying to us for funds. It's, it's disheartening, but I don't blame them. And the city of Lawrence has applied for funds. And so I'm also, that, that I also think is a, is a pressure on this funding source, which you hate to say, like, well, you know, go, go get your own money. But, you know, but it's, it is, it's a struggle because it's, it's not like those projects are not necessarily valid. It's just, there are such limited funds and that's what's so disappointing is there's clearly tremendous, you know, tremendous projects here, just not enough funding to do it.
Yeah, I think that's where mine, my mind was sort of, I appreciate the conversation because it's sort of highlighting two different things. One is that there's a limited set of funds and we may want to look more strategically about what's appropriate for those funds. But then I really appreciate that maybe the HCC, we shouldn't box in the ACC, HCCs just being about those grants. That it's also, you know, uses that idea of an extension agent, that it's also connecting them with other programs. And I, I think that's powerful because it, in one way, it sounds like, well, maybe we should change the whole thing up, but it may be working the way that we want it to. With a little more tapered guidelines, because I should, you know, I saw the lead center on there, which has its own funders, its own fundraising, its own whole system. And, and I know we get a lot of those that, you know, just me personally, I'm really interested in that barn owner, you know, or, or that, that has a resource that, that isn't tied to anything else. So you all have done just a fabulous job as you work through all those grants. And I know what you bring us. The, the amazing thing to me every time is how many dollars that multiplies, that the gift that, that comes from that ACC grant really then triggers other dollars out there. So yeah, it's just great conversation. Thank you. Not seeing any other questions? Any last thoughts you'd like to leave us with?
If, if I could, I want to say just, I, I know this group's been through some transition and, and I, just the work you all do is tremendous and the amount of time you put in and the energy and, and there, we have so many active boards that do so much heavy lifting, but this is really at the top of that list. And you know, Pat, please pass along back to your, your full council that just how incredible, we see that work and, and I, you know, I, I don't, I did something similar to Caitlin in a previous life and I know how much work it is to review those grant applications. And I know you guys sweat all those details to make sure that it's just the absolute perfect project for what you want to do. And so thank you for that work on behalf of the county.
Thank you for having us. I think it's our pleasure. I know I learned something every single meeting from all of our grantees are, my fellow council members from Caitlin, from Jill. It's, it's just a lot of fun. It does a lot of work, but it doesn't always feel like it.
Yep. I think we all, we have a really great group that we work with. And the awesome thing is then we meet people all over Douglas County who are also amazing to work with. And it's just been really rewarding. Reviewing a lot of grants is a little bit hard, but you know, but every time we review them, I learn something new. And I think that we all, we all grow so much through the process. And it's really the fun part for me that is that we're all so different. Like I'm so used to working with architects all day that that's just so, and architecture students, it's kind of the same perspective over and over again. And then to go to the council and have such a range of people to discuss things with and to discuss the same building, you know, seven different ways, seven different viewpoints. For me, it's really a way that helps me learn something new. And I think that's one of the other reasons why we see the value in our diversity as we are right now, just in job diversity and expertise. And that's another reason why I think bringing in, we're kind of excited about the idea that having another, another layer of people to work with. I think to help kind of keep, keep that energy alive as well.
Thank you. And you guys make my job really easy. So thanks.
Caitlin, well, you've done a wonderful job starting and, and this has been a great presentation. Commissioner Portio, as in last thought.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you. This presentation was fantastic and I was able to learn a lot and I'm deeply appreciative of all of the work that you put into this.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. This will adjourn our work session and we will begin our business meeting at 5:30. Good evening and welcome to our April 6th Board of Douglas County Commissioners Business Meeting. Commissioner Reed is out tonight, so I will be chairing our meeting. We want to welcome, we are wanting to welcome any of you at the Douglas County Courthouse and others joining us online just to pass along a bit of information regarding how we'll run our. Just to pass along a bit of information regarding how we'll run our hybrid meetings in person and on Zoom during this time of social distancing. I'll go over these procedures that we follow. Each action item will have an opportunity for public comment. If you want to make a comment on that item, we ask that you wait until. That item is on the agenda. The public comment portion of our agenda is for items not on the agenda. But related to general county business, all public comments should be directed at the county commission. For both opportunities, we'll take public comment from citizens who are in the courthouse first and then online comment, uh, commoners. All public comments will be limited to three minutes. If you have a public comment on an agenda item or under regular public comment, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Staff will call on you and then unmute you. We ask that speakers give their name and address for the minutes. The county reserves the right to show off the microphone. And remove any speaker from the meeting if they're vulgar, vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. If visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share the screen with the call. Participants will not be able to view them without a computer, smartphone, or tablet. All participants will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted, meaning the commission and the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will then be unmuted when their agenda item comes up. We ask that all online presenters use good conference call etiquette and mute their line when not speaking and introduce themselves each time they speak. The chat function has been disabled. The recording of this meeting will be available on our website after the meeting. With that, our first agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioner. Portio, do you have any item you'd like to pull off the agenda for further conversation?
Nope.
Check with members of the public here if there's anything on the consent agenda that they would like to have removed. Seeing none. We'll check online. Is there anyone online? All right. No one online? I would welcome a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda items one point one through one point six.
Yes, that's what I was asking. If, if we remove them, then we do. You're gonna have to come up to the microphone, right? Which item would you like removed for public comment?
Well, are, are, are we. Requesting removal or am I making a comment on? Because there's, there are two severance and distinct.
So we would remove it from our consent agenda.
Okay.
We would put it then into new business and open it up for public comment.
All right, fair enough. Thank you. Uh, I, I'd like to say a couple of things about the suicide prevention nine eight eight contract agreement.
Okay, we'll do that here. Oh, just that one? Or is there more?
And the one after that, the contractor user agreement with Hartland Rad Act, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of comments about both of those.
Okay. So we had a motion. And a second, do you want to adjust your?
I will amend my motion.
Thank you.
To move to approve consent agenda items one point one. One point four, one point five, and one point six.
Excellent. I will second that. All those in favor?
I.
I will move items one point two and one point three to new business. And we'll take public comment when we take those items.
Okay. So am I making a comment now or sitting back?
No, we're on public comment now. And then when we get to new business or our regular agenda, we'll cover that. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to general public comment. General public comment is received after the consent agenda and before regular agenda items. We've already gone over. Well, I'll just read it again. The commission reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes per speaker if desired, and we do. Individuals may not use unused time for other speakers. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss debate. Nor will the commission make any decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer items to staff for follow up if necessary. All comments should be directed to the county commission. Dr. Justin Spees, you're first for public comment.
Dr. Justin Spees, weekly reminder that I haven't forgot what you did to me. And if you ever forget, think you forget what you did to me. I won't let you forget. If you ever think that you didn't do anything to me, I'll be here to remind you. Should've just stayed out of my life. And now you have to be held accountable. It's as simple as that. There's no other option.
Next up is Sue Harrick.
Hi. I'm back. I'm the one who was here. Repeatedly. Often reminding you that I have eight grandkids stretched across this country. I had a pretty good feel for what they went through compared to what you put our children through here in Douglas County. And I hope from what I said then and continued to repeat. That you gain some perspective and that if this reoccurs again, which I want to show you that it probably will. That it's coming this way again, the stupidity will return. And I'm hoping that this time around. You'll have some better perspective and put the kids' needs above the idiocy that's going around. Across the pond. In New, in England. There are nine new symptoms for COVID now. And this. Type of thinking will jump the pond and come this way. But just to give you an idea, a rough sketch of how idiotic this is, here are the nine new symptoms for COVID. According to the NHS in England. First one is shortness of breath. Second one is feeling tired or exhausted. Third one is an aching body. Fourth is a headache. Fifth is a sore throat. Six, blocked or runny nose. Seven, loss of appetite. Eight, diarrhea. And nine, the topper of it all is feeling sick or being sick. In other words, if you're, have an off day in their mentality, you have COVID. It's that stupid. So if it jumps the pond, which I anticipate that it will. This is a heads up that we're not tolerating policy that follows this kind of idiocy. Thank you.
Joe Harrick, you're up next.
My name is Joe Harrick. And I'd like to just recap a little bit of what's been going on for over the past two years. I know early on, there were some of us that referenced, uh, this has the makings of Nazi Germany. And I think the further we've gone along, the more that has come to light. We've restricted people's freedom like never before. We cannot even walk into this building without a face mask on, which is illegal. It mandates are not laws. The CDC doesn't make laws. They provide guidelines. And it takes a little bit of common sense to see through all of this. I mean, the deputies and, and the commissioners, any elected official. Nobody has lived up to their oath of office. Which is defending the Constitution of the United States. We have elected. A clown. And therefore we have a circus. We have no freedoms as citizens, but the border is wide open. You can come in. You don't have to be vaccinated. You don't have to wear a mask. We'll, we'll give you food stamps. We have to wake up to what's going on. In, in my estimation. Money, if you follow the money, you're gonna find the evil. Whether anybody wants to own up to it or not, the government's printing money like crazy. For two hundred and fifty years, two hundred and fifty years ago, we had zero debt. Now it's over thirty twelve. Next year, their budget, they're proposing two point eight trillion deficit. In other words, it's probably gonna expand ten percent in one year. And we have to wake up to what's going on in this country. We no longer have freedoms. We're, and you, everybody is under the impression that everything some authority tells you is true. We're gonna learn out real fast, real fast. That we've been lied to, we've been conned. And we're gonna pay a dear, dear price, especially for our children. Thank you.
Brian Connor.
Yeah, Brian Connor, Lawrence, Kansas. You don't know who I am. I guess what I'll do is, uh, when you're talking later there, ma'am, is I'll just get in the corner over here on my phone real loud. And completely ignore what you're doing because I'll be a rude asshole. All right? I understand, but you know, we've gotten to the point of ridiculousness, Patrick. Okay, we're beyond ridiculous. Okay. I struggle with figuring out how to get a response from any of the members of this board. All right. I will give you credit that you'll generally at least look at the people talking. But your colleagues are just. It, it boggles the mind. Where these ladies think that they're holier than thou. That's not what I wanted to talk about. What I wanted to talk about is what passes for science amongst the Biden supporters. Who voted for Obama, who voted for Clinton, who voted for all the et cetera, AKA you three. I'm willing to wager my Harley versus a burning bag of dog poop that all three of y'all voted for Biden and Hillary and Clinton. Et cetera, back as far as, you know, based on your various ages, you could have been voting. I'll do that right now. What I wanted to talk about was what passes for what y'all claim trust to science. And I'm gonna look at what your colleagues in New York City are doing. Your fellow travelers over there on the Marxist left. Putting four and five and six year olds in masks while no one else is in masks. Let's put the people least likely to get the disease and least likely to transmit the disease. Into the masks that have been demonstrably shown to do nothing. Why are we doing that? It's not because we care about the children. That y'all have been lying about for forty or fifty years now. It's because you're trying to break those children's will. And as an individual who spent a lot of years in the United States Army, including places like Sears School, I'm well versed. In the methodologies to break someone's will. And then New York City has also decided that their basketball player who hasn't been vaccinated can attend the game. As a spectator, but he can't play in the game. However, comma, the team from outside of New York City that comes to New York City, their non-vaccinated players. Can actually play in the game that he's attending as a spectator that he can't participate in. Because the science. That has exactly zero linkages in any way, shape, or form to anything approaching science. That doesn't have any linkages even to the quackery known as political science, let alone actual science. Like epidemiology, biology, chemistry, any of those things. I wish I could get all three of y'all unelected this year instead of just you, Patrick. Have a nice day.
Anyone online, Sarah, Jill, for public comment? Okay, then with that, we'll close public comment. Our first regular agenda item is the Douglas County Courthouse Basement Waterproofing Project. Jay.
Hello, Commissioners. Jay Zmerci, Director of Capital Projects, Douglas County. Here to give you some background on the upcoming project we have for waterproofing in the foundation of this building. The building was originally constructed in, I believe it was nineteen oh four. And at that time, it was commonplace for foundations for buildings such as this to be built without waterproofing on the exterior. They would purge the inside of the walls, which is the finish you see. And that's what actually at that time was supposed to do waterproofing. Since the building was constructed, that has. Probably been the greatest reason for, we believe, for water infiltration into the basement when we have it. And so this project. Prior to master plan work that may be coming down the road, we want to get down there and correct. That issue so that work that is performed in the basement as part of future projects won't be compromised. By the existing water infiltration conditions. We've gone out for RFP. That was, it's really a request for qualifications. We had two respondents. We used the new county's new procurement system for. Doing that kind of digitally online. So. We're working towards more modern ways of, of issuing those things. Had two very good respondents, both very qualified. Went through a process, a vetting process and interview process and made the selection to. It is the, the committee's recommendation to move forward with Hernley and Associates, which you see there in your packet. They would perform a phase one component, which is really a study of all the potential. Components of the existing building, surrounding site. Roof water, water that makes it into the stone of the building and perks itself down, a study of how this water might be getting there. And then as part of that, they'll develop for us a scope of work that looks like. We believe it will look like excavating down along the foundations of the, of the building and waterproofing that surface. But they'll work with the Historic Resources Commission. To be sure we're doing that in acceptable manner to them, as all of this will be. Eligible for tax credit reimbursement, which will help us offset the cost of the project. Also, we received a heritage trust fund grant for the project. In the amount of ninety thousand dollars and we're, we're going through some of the upfront work on that, but that also will help offset the overall cost for this. And all of the work on the foundation will, will qualify for, for use of those dollars. Dollars that we were granted, we cannot kind of double dip and get the tax credits for too. We'll have to subtract that value, but. Still, it's all two, you know, two good, two good ways of offsetting project costs. So. So really what we're asking for here is. Commission approval to proceed into negotiating a contract with Hernley and Associates for phase one and phase two. Phase two would be design documentation and bidding of the. The work that was developed in the first scope, then we would be back before this board. At that time with a, with a contract for award for the actual construction. So. We are currently in contract negotiations with them and. That's going well. So no reason to think that it won't move forward. So. I think it is important to note when we do this, there will be some interruptions around the outside of the courthouse. We will be taking off the north stairs. And the west stairs so that we're waterproofing along under the walls underneath them. And so managing public access and keeping those kinds of pieces intact and we, we need those stairs for egress as well. So. So there would just will be some impact there as we move forward with this. It's really a great, a great first step in getting the building ready for. A look at the master plan and being sure we're ready to move forward with it. So. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Jake. Commissioner Portio, you have any questions for Jay? My one question, Jay, is you have nine percent for phase two. Could you just, is that typical in the industry? Or is that negotiable at all? How, how did that decide on nine percent?
So the way the RFP was written, we asked for a phase one lump sum fee. To study the work and develop the scope of, develop a scope of workforce and then an associated cost estimate. The phase two part would be based on the value of the construction and nine percent is on these type of projects is not unheard of at all because. The, the, what I would call construction administration, when, when we have the excavation done along the side of the building. Will have a structural engineer down in there tapping around to make sure that the stones that are there are not. Compromised to the point that they need replacement, those kind of things. And so it, it's a lot of time that in a new project on nonhistoric buildings. That looks a little different. And so that nine percent, I think, is, is very reasonable for projects of this kind. Yeah.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Do you have public comment? Come on up.
My public comment on this would be very, very, very quick and direct. Commissioner Portillo, what the, what were the key factors of that gentleman's answer to Mr. Kelly's question? You're sitting there sending emails or something nonstop. On the taxpayers dime. So I'm wondering if those are perhaps emails I can get through a Freedom of Information Act. Because I'm assuming that on the taxpayers dime, while you're here in this building, you're doing work related to this job and not your job at the university.
Any other public comment? Anybody online? Thank you. Bring it back to the commission for discussion and/or motions.
This is Commissioner Portillo. Jay, thank you so much for this presentation. I am very excited that we are moving forward with this project and thank you for the work that you put in on it. I don't have additional discussion, but I'm happy to make a motion if you're ready.
Be fine.
Move to authorize the county administrator to enter into a mutually agreed. A mutually agreed to contract with Hernley and Associates Inc. for phase one pre design services in the amount of eight thousand dollars. And for phase two services of the Douglas County Historic Courthouse Foundation Waterproofing Project at a percentage rate of nine percent. For cost of work identified in the phase one services.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jay, appreciate your work on that. It's exciting to get that done. I know that protecting this building is a, it's, it's appropriate that we had the historical. The Heritage Conservation Council here earlier to talk about preserving things like the courthouse. And I appreciate your work to make sure that this building will be here for a long time. So thank you. Okay, we had a request for. Some of our consent items to be pulled because we have a member of the public who'd like to make public comment. So the first item is acceptance of the Kansas Suicide Prevention and Headquarters nine eight eight contract. As Mr. Connor comes to address the commission. Just a reminder to keep all comments about the item and questions maybe that you had or concerns you had about the item, please.
Commissioner Kelly, since we did pull this from consent, are we going to take a presentation on it before? Comment or do we just jump?
We, either way, if there are, we do have. Bob Tryansky here, who I think can speak to this one. How would you like to proceed? I'm fine either way.
I'm fine with starting with public comment then and then going to conversation.
First off, real quick, I know I kick you on the knee a lot of time. I want to say real quickly, I'm glad to see that y'all got some things going here, working on some road repair and other things that are necessary. I like to see that. Now, relative to this thing, my main concern I have is. While I can appreciate the kind of the objectives we're trying to get to. I don't necessarily know if it's money well spent, money wisely spent, or why we're spending it. And if there's potentially some nefarious things behind it. I mean, the organization that we're going to spend this money with for this nine eight eight number that I'm sure if we did a randomly selected a thousand people in Lawrence. And asked them if they had any idea what the hell nine eight eight phone number was and if it even existed. I suppose. Once again, I'd be willing to wager my Harley versus that bag of dog poop. That nine hundred and fifty of a thousand would have no clue what it is. And if that they had some psychiatric issue or something in that nature, they're gonna dial nine one one. So what are we trying to do here other than transfer a couple hundred thousand dollars to this? Non governmental contractor. Then on top of that additionally is. Their eight hundred number and their local seven eight five area code number is plastered all over the internet and elsewhere already. It's on her Facebook page, it's on her Twitter, it's on a Google search, it's on all that stuff. So people can already call them directly. You know, if I'm having a psychological issue or something in nature that would need, you know, these folks' services. I'm either dialing nine one one or I'm gonna look up on a phone number and I'm gonna see that on the website. Under the Twitter handle, it says, hey, we're here for you twenty four seven, three sixty five, call eight hundred blah 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 or seven eight five blah blah blah. And I'm gonna call that number. So what are we doing? And then from my reading of the thing, it looks like we only have part time folks for this nine eight eight number. So what happens when those part time folks are not there? Is it then just rolling over to these numbers that I talked about already anyway? Is this some sort of political payback? Is that why this is happening? I don't know. I don't necessarily care, but you know. What are we trying to do with this? I understand, like I said, you know, it's commendable to some extent, the objectives we're trying to do here and help folks that may have issues. That they, you know, they might do something silly and kill themselves or something. But I don't know why necessarily we're doing it this way.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Portillo. It may be helpful if we just have a quick overview of nine eight eight, which is federal law. It's something that our state is wrestling with and it's something we've had discussions with since. The entire time I've been on the commission.
I agree. Thank you for being here, Bob.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about bringing nine eight eight online as Commissioner Portillo says. And everyone is aware, we've been talking about this for really about four years now. As the referendum went forward with Proposition One to improve our behavioral health system of care. And the discussion that started with, we need to build a crisis center as an alternative to jail and the emergency department. Expanded through our behavioral health stakeholders in the community who said, what we really need is an integrated system of care. If you build a crisis center and think it's going to be a magic bullet, what you actually run the danger of doing is constructing another homeless shelter with just another revolving door. So a comprehensive system of care involves. A number of components that are designed to keep people from getting to the point where they would need to access the emergency department. Or require law enforcement intervention or require a nine one one emergency response. Nationally, nine eight eight will be coming online in July of twenty twenty two. And so the idea of having a Douglas County twenty four seven crisis line that not only can take calls and respond to people in crisis. But will also be able to dispatch and deploy an alternative to emergency response, such as an ambulance or law enforcement. Paramedics is what we are trying to do. So nine eight eight emergency response should divert eighty percent of the calls ought to be able to be resolved on the phone. If you dispatch a mobile team, a mobile team ought to be able to divert ninety seventy six percent of the of the calls, the response in the community. Before somebody gets to a much higher level of care. So. You know, you'll remember that last year, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council stood up a mobile response work group. To look at our options, to assess our needs and to move forward with some recommendations about how to bring these components online. So we have that comprehensive system of care. That, that work group recommended that we turn to Kansas Suicide Prevention Headquarters, who will be stewarding and managing nine eight eight statewide. Given the fact that they also are in this community and the subject matter expertise in that organization is deep. That we would turn to them to bring the Douglas County nine eight eight line online. So Monica Curse from headquarters is online. Steve DeVore, who is the CEO, the executive director of KSP HQ is ill and that's why I'm here today. So between the two of us, we're hoping we can respond to your questions. And I know Monica is prepared to do an even better job of an overview than I just hobbled through right there. But just wanted to set the context that this is something that we've been talking about for a number of years. And given the fact that nine eight eight is coming online in July of twenty twenty two, we want to be prepared to have people full time. Even if they're part time workers, they will be providing full time response. So we really have that genuine twenty four seven crisis response available online in Douglas County. Monica.
Thank you so much, Bob, for helping to provide some, some background to the, the project that I'm very excited about in my organization. KSP HQ is, is taking a lot of pride in our ability to, to play this part for the community. I do want to echo what Bob said, that we will see nine eight eight go live on all phone lines. July sixteenth of this year, so just a little over three months from now. From any landline or cell phone, mental health support will be just three numbers away. I think that it's important to acknowledge that we do have a job to do. When it comes to educating the public about a new resource in nine eight eight. I think we hear often, why isn't this a resource? Or why isn't this a service that, that we should expect from nine one one? And I think that really that's where the promise of nine eight eight comes into play. That what we are looking at is, is giving folks access to mental health, highly trained crisis counselors immediately upon dialing. This means that instead of having a law enforcement response or an EMS response to someone whose primary concern is around their mental health. They will be speaking with someone who can address those concerns in the moment. One of the other things that we're very excited about with the nine eight eight project is the opportunity it holds. To collaborate with our nine one one provider, especially here in Douglas County. So what we hope to see through the, through the course of this project. Is to execute on some plans that we've been making with our nine one one P S A P here in Douglas County. To set it up where folks who are safe, physically safe and eligible for a transfer. From a nine one one operator can speak with a highly trained crisis counselor. To have their need met and a safety plan identified in that moment. What we find is that when we're able to address these needs on the phone. What that results in is a better, less traumatic experience for the person who's experiencing the crisis and very often their family as well. This means that we have fewer rides in the back of police cars, fewer people showing up in emergency departments. And fewer people showing up in jail. So we really do find that it's a very cost effective way. To, to provide these mental health services, especially as that front door. As we're often the, the first point of contact for folks in a mental health crisis. I would also echo what Bob said, that while the contract does read that we employ many part time staff. I think it's important to make the, the commission and the public aware that the services are available twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days a year. We do utilize a lot of part time schedules to help with compassion fatigue and shepherding burnout. We think it's really important to foster. Community at KSP HQ that supports the workers that are doing this really tough work day in and day out in a way that's sustainable. And we find that those more flexible schedules are a way that we're able to do that. I'd also just maybe kind of in conclusion, point out that. You know, one of the reasons that we think that this transition to nine eight eight is so important. Is that we no longer have to remember or worry about folks remembering a ten digit phone number. We're no longer thinking about an eight hundred, whatever the rest of the numbers are or a seven eight five. I think that's an eight four one next. What we're really talking about is folks who are in that mental health crisis, having very, very easy access to this resource. I have a slide deck prepared with more detail about the way that I see nine eight eight operationalizing in Douglas County. Which is very much focused on bringing to fruition. Really important aspects of the statewide plan that we've been collaborating with the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services. On crafting for the state in a very local way. We, we know that there are some things like the dispatch of the mobile response program. Like ensuring that we have really close ties with our behavioral health providers for those ongoing supports and services. That are really, we're only able to achieve through our partnership with Douglas County. I'm so happy to go into that detail if it's helpful for the commission and I'll let you all ask any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Monica. Commissioner Portillo, any questions?
I have no questions, but I really appreciate the overview, Monica.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here, Monica, and Bob, you too. Bob, I just want to make sure I understood something you said earlier. I think it's important to reiterate. So. The, one of the, my understandings around nine eight eight is it will actually reduce the cost that we have with nine one one, which is a very expensive service right now. Which requires us to dispatch when someone calls nine one one, it requires us to dispatch. Law enforcement or emergency medicine or fire, although in this case probably not so much fire. And what we're talking about is, is actually bringing the service to the person that's on the phone with nine eight eight. Which I think I understood you to say would reduce the cost of nine one one, which is a cost for the county, right? Because we do dispatch now. Am I understanding all that correctly?
Everything we're trying to do with improving this behavioral health system of care is designed to get people the right care in the right setting at the right time. The right setting means the least restrictive setting. And everything we're trying to do is to find the least costly response. So with integration and connection between nine eight eight and nine one one. Nine eight eight, if there's a need for an emergency response, can also always dispatch up. And if there are repeat callers at nine one one, as we again get better at integration. They would ought to be able to not have to just automatically deploy someone. Because they could refer the caller to nine eight eight, do the direct connection and keep the person on the phone. Which is the least costly way to de escalate a crisis before anybody, including a mobile response team goes out. All of the experts we've worked with around the country, in Phoenix, in Ohio. In New York have said to us that, again, eighty five percent of those emergency crisis moments. That get a person to the point where they pick up the phone and call can be resolved on the phone in the field, in the community. So the best setting to resolve crisis is where the person is at. So we want to meet them where they're at. And then we want to respond as thoughtfully and as comprehensively as we can. And that is why we're bringing each of these components online to stitch together. And that's what we said to the public when we asked them to support the referendum. Expanded mobile response was clearly articulated as one of the objectives of the use of the, of the sales tax. So, so in a, in a lot of ways, it's realizing an aspiration that the community started with and sort of affirmed with an eighty five percent. Approval of the, of the sales tax.
So, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to jump in with, excuse me, Commissioner Kelly asked a really important question about efficiency. And Bob, I really appreciate you coming back and tying this back to our values. I think that there are kind of a few pieces here where nine eight eight is a mandate. And it's meant to kind of parallel the nine one one system, but the nine one one system has been integrated into public service for a really long time. Nine eight eight is a mandate that we're being asked to fully develop outside of the traditional kind of bounds of government. So what we're doing as a local community is contracting with a really wonderful nonprofit partner. But I think we have to be careful when we talk about that integration and recognize that that integration, that takes a lot of work. And I think that is where the values of our community, kind of beyond efficiency, come into play. Where we're saying we want to make a community wide response that integrates our nonprofit sector, our government. And we're making sure that, just like you said, the response matches what our community is asking for. And here, our community is saying, we want a behavioral health response, when a behavioral health response is what's appropriate rather than a criminal legal response. And so I think our biggest challenge is not necessarily the funding piece, though. As we have said many times on this commission, our budget demonstrates our values. But the biggest challenge is going to be, how do we make sure that we are truly integrating? Contracting for part of this service with a nonprofit and integrating it into our well established nine one one dispatch. And making sure we have all of the services that our community needs. So I, I appreciate that high level kind of systems view of it, but I want to make sure that our community understands there are a lot of moving parts. And we're trying to get ahead of something that we're going to kind of have to do from a federal perspective. But we don't know what those resources are going to be from the state perspective. So we're relying on our local community to say, these are our goals. And so I appreciate how much work you and Monica have put into reaching those goals.
Well, and also again, I just keep in mind this grew out of and is sort of guided and shepherded and stewarded by this mobile response work group. Which in, has engaged and involved all of our municipalities, law enforcement agencies, the sheriff's department, EMS. All of those stakeholders have said, yes, this makes sense and do this in this way. So that process was where we started. We also engaged a community. So, that process was where we started. We also engaged a community listening session for response. So, you know, there has been a process of how to develop this, how to make a recommendation that has multiple stakeholders, not just our behavioral health partners involved. And so, again, it's a it's a process and a learning curve and the work will continue in this crisis space the way the work has evolved in the behavioral health stakeholder space.
Bob, I appreciate your answer. Commissioner Portillo, thanks for that. You talked about an efficiency of dollars. And I think tonight is a good reminder that we still have a lot of work to do to educate people about mental health and the long-term repercussions of how we respond to mental health crisis. I was talking about economics, economic costs, but I'm also wanting to speak just a little bit to the public about the cost of someone having, who is struggling with mental health for facing law enforcement or folks who aren't necessarily trained in that area. That can be re-traumatizing. They can be put into jail for reasons that are not, that are behavioral health reasons and not because they have committed a criminal act. And so, I think we have heard loud and clear from our communities that this is a way that we need to respond. And and I'm very confident in the work that you are doing and Monica that you are doing and that KSHPQ is doing. I just feel very strongly about this and I appreciate a member of the public pulling this so we could talk more about it. Because I think we still have a lot of work to do in this space to help people understand what mental health is, how we destigmatize it, how we talk about it and how we get the right resources to the right people at the right time, as you say so eloquently, Bob. So, thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Connor. Thank you, Bob, for your presentation. Monica, thank you for for your comments as well. I don't have any more. Sorry, Justin, public comment is closed on this. We've moved on. Justin, we've closed public comment on on this item. Should, Justin, we don't allow that. So.
This is Commissioner Portillo and I.
Mr. Connor, Mr. Connor, Mr. Connor. This, we don't take, we had a spot for public comment, then we brought a presentation up, then we do questions. You've attended our meetings before. This is, this is our procedure. We're going to follow this procedure. We don't take comments from people out in weather sitting there. We're not going to, I'm not going to have a conversation with you gentlemen. Gentlemen. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn for five minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned for five minutes. All right, we're back and we are finishing up on item 1.2, I think. Commissioner Portillo, did you make a motion on that?
I was in the process of making a motion. I am happy to do so. I move to authorize the county administrator to sign the 988 crisis line service agreement.
Great. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to item 1.3, that there is also a request for a public comment. I'm going to ask on this one, since I don't know that the public is totally familiar, they may be more familiar with 988 than my resource connection. Jill, could you just give us a little bit of background on what my resource connection is and how we use it in Douglas County?
Sure. Jill Jolker, Assistant County Administrator and historically served as the project manager for the My Resource Connection data sharing project. My Resource Connection is a online HIPAA compliant care coordination data sharing resource that Douglas County started in 2018 in partnership with Johnson County Government. It utilizes a HIPAA compliant data sharing platform and data sharing agreements that have shared a great, shared signatures from all of our participating agencies, which include DECA, Lawrence Memorial Health, the health, Lawrence Douglas County Health Department, Lawrence Douglas County Fire and Medical, Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center, Jayhawk Area Agency on Aging, Heartland Health. And we have a host of providers that in our criminal justice partner agencies, Douglas County Jail, Johnson County Jail, District Court and Criminal Justice Services that share data on mutual clients to coordinate care and support clients as they hopefully navigate the different emergency systems and try to prevent unnecessary utilization of services and promote recovery. That's the short background on the project and how we've used it historically and how we use it today. The Contractor User Agreement that's before you today is to permit an additional partner, Heartland Radac, who is not a participate, they are not participate, they are not providing data to MRC at this point because of some delays on their end with a new electronic medical record that they're instituting. But they fully intend to contribute their data on mutual clients that they're engaged in care coordination in Douglas County on behalf of. While we wait for that data to be reported, the Contractor User Agreement is a tool that legal counsel has reviewed on Johnson County and at Douglas County that will permit them to view data about mutual clients and coordinate care in the meantime. There is mutual agreement from all of the executives on the MRC Governance Board that we've created. So, that's the executive directors of all of the agencies that contribute data. We formed an exec, we formed a governance council and asked them if they're comfortable with this and they've all agreed to that unanimously. So, we'd like to proceed with the Contractor User Agreement as follows.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions? No. Jill, this is, we've had this user agreement for a number of years now, right? Do you remember how many years? Is it three or four?
The user, the Contractor User Agreement and the and the data sharing agreement that's that it, that it sits on top of it, so to speak. We entered into that with Johnson County in 2018 when we first started. The User Agreement is, the Contractor User Agreement is the agreement that is between us and our partners in Douglas County and Johnson County that we're asking them to be, to follow all the rules as in viewing the data in MRC. But that agreement was crafted originally by Johnson County.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll take public comment on this item. Mr. Connor, I believe you had some public comment. Thank you. There's no more public comment. We'll bring it back. Anybody online, Jill or Sarah?
This is Commissioner Portillo. I'm happy to make a motion. I move to approve a Contractor User Agreement with Johnson County, Kansas, and the Heartland Regional Drug and Alcohol Assessment Center for My Resource Connection.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those, that ends our regular agenda items. We'll move on to appointments. I'm very close on my CJCC appointment, very close. I need to make one more phone call, so I should have that next week. Just a reminder, we talked at our last meeting about if you have names for planning commission to send those to Sarah and I can do some work on that. Are there any appointments? I don't think we got any, Commissioner Portillo, do you have any? No. Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner or Administrator miscellaneous.
Sarah. Thank you, commissioners. My memo is in the packet for you all. I'm pleased to put in this memo that Douglas County has received a AAA bond rating from Moody's Investor Services for our upcoming refinancing bond issue. This, this rating, creating credit rating is the highest rating a local government can receive for its financial stewardship. And it's, and it's Moody's independent analysis of our financial position. It's, it's a real, it signifies a lot of work that the staff has put together to end the work of elected officials to have us in a strong financial position to be rated by Moody's as AAA. So, there was an announcement made by Moody's and to investors for the upcoming refinancing. And we're just really pleased that Moody's was able to recognize some of the hard work we've been doing here related to financial stewardship. So, and with that, I would say that the the kind of end of the legislative policy statement is there for, well, before we move into veto session and commissioners, I don't have any work sessions planned for the next several weeks. I do want to mention, and I'm going to put on this memo, I'm going to mention while Austin's here, on the 20th, we will have the text amendment for solar. So, we're going to try to get the word out to lots of the folks that have been engaged in that process. But our plan is to review the text amendment for, yep, it'll be a rate with public comment. And presentation of the text amendment will be at the April 20th work session or April 20th business meeting on utility scale solar. And that's all I have, commissioners.
This is Commissioner Portillo. Sarah, it is a really big deal that we have continued this AAA bond rating and it warms my soul to see the recognition that you and all of your budget and finance staff have earned through this. So, thank you for what you do for our community and the financial stewardship. This will make it so that we, this makes it so that we're using our public dollars more efficiently because we can get the best rates for our bonds. So, thank you for that work. It's a big deal. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just sorry to hear that there's a basketball game that sort of overshadowed the AAA bond rating for Douglas County. So, it's just really bad timing, I suppose, but in all seriousness, Sarah, thank you very much to you and your team who've worked so hard to do this. It really demonstrates what what good government looks like. So, thank you. Any other miscellaneous, Commissioner Portillo? I don't have anything else. I think everything else is on the memo. And with that, we are adjourned.